Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing on Wednesday, February 5, 2025, relative to Bills 1303 and 1343. We're going to actually begin with Bill 1343. And will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1343, Resolution Approving an Institutional Master Plan Application Under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article Two, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. To Central Catholic High School, Property Owner for the Central Catholic High School Campus Located Along Fifth Avenue and South Neville Street, Parcels 52J, 264, and 52J-118, Zoned EMI Educational Medical Institution, Fourteenth Ward, Council District Number Eight.
Thank you. Our first order of business is will be remarks from our City Planning Department, and then we'll take testimony from registered speakers. If you would kindly introduce yourself for the record and provide whatever remarks you may have.
My name is Paul Consilla, and I'm a Principal Planner with the Department of City Planning. This is a request for an approval of an institutional master plan that was submitted by Central Catholic High School for its existing campus in the Squirrel Hill North Neighborhood. This is the first IMP for the campus. There's no proposed expansion and no street vacations are proposed as a part of this institutional master plan. The EMI district allows uses associated with educational and medical institutions, as well as a number of accessory uses in accordance with an approved institutional master plan. With limited exceptions, an institutional master plan must be submitted and approved prior to any development within an EMI district. The IMP for Central Catholic High School identifies three new projects within the 10-year development envelope, which includes the renovations of the Brothers Residence, a new three-story student center with an underground parking garage and a pedestrian bridge to connect the student center to the quad, and renovations to the main building. This IMP was reviewed by the Department of City Planning, and Central Catholic addressed several staff comments, including the clearance underneath the proposed pedestrian bridge, the proposed spectator seating, shuttle and van parking, which are proposed on Carnegie Mellon University property. The applicant indicated that the permission has been provided by CMU for these purposes, and the design of the new student center building and how that building engages and connects the campus with the residential neighborhood. The Transportation Impact Study was reviewed and approved by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Property owners within 150 feet of the proposed master plan area were notified of the proposal, and notices were posted onsite in accordance with Section 922.01.C. The Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, USHUC, is the registered community organization where the high school campus is located. There was a joint Development Activities Meeting between USHUC and the Oakland Business Improvement District that occurred on October 30, 2024. A copy of that meeting is attached to the materials provided to the clerk's office. In accordance with Section 922.12.D., the Planning Commission made a positive recommendation to City Council for the institutional master plan on December 10, 2024. And per Section 922.12.E., City Council shall hold a public hearing on the institutional master plan applications within 120 days of Planning Commission's action, so today's hearing day complies with that requirement.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to testimony from registered speakers, beginning with Michael Smith. Thank you very much. That will take us to Kevin McKeegan. Thank you very much. Bob Reppe?
Good afternoon. Bob Reppe, university architect representing Carnegie Mellon University. We are here to lodge our support for the project for the institutional master plan put forth by Central Catholic. We applaud the work that they have done to bring forward such a good institutional master plan, thoughtfully considering all of the neighboring components for that, and urge City Council to approve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I don't see her online, but Andrea Boikowitz. Oh, I didn't. Sorry, I looked right past you. I apologize.
Hi, I actually was registered to speak on the North Oakland zoning portion, but would like to say that the Development Activities Meeting that was held in collaboration with USHUC and with the Oakland Business Improvement District also included Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, and that we similarly were involved with the review of the draft, and we connected them with some neighbors. And we also recommend that council approve the IMP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, before we move on to 1303, for the record, we've been joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasberg. Is there anything you would like to add?
Well, I realize we're acting in our judicial capacity, and so you can't speak to affirmative or negative about the bills at hand, but I will just say that Central Catholic has engaged our office, along with communities far beyond, you know, their direct kind of neighbors, really effectively, and really brought a lot of people into the process throughout this very new IMP that they've never had to deal with before. So, wanted to state that.
Thank you. Well, we certainly thank Central Catholic for being a good neighbor and a good partner. With that, we'll then move on to Bill 1303, and will the clerk please read the title of that bill?
Bill 1303, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article One, Introduction and Establishment, Section 902.03, Zoning Map to Rezone Parcels Bounded by Neville Street, Forbes Avenue, South Bellfield Avenue, and Bigelow Boulevard in the North Oakland Neighborhood from multi-unit residential, moderate, and very high density Oakland Public Realm Subdistrict, specially planned District Seven, urban industrial and hillside, to urban center employment and urban center mixed use in the North Oakland Neighborhood.
Thank you very much. And once again, we'll turn over to our planning department to provide whatever commentary you all would like to.
Sure. We have a presentation, I believe.
Yeah, so we are on the Zoom, and we can share our screen.
Okay.
So, I think we may just have to get permission to be able to get on there. Christian Umback. All right. Thank you for that, and we'll go ahead and share our presentation now.
All right. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director of City Planning. Thank you all for, you know, letting us kind of discuss this bill, which is a proposed rezoning for North Oakland. If we go to the next slide, you know, really this is an outgrowth of the Oakland Plan, which is the adopted neighborhood plan, you know, for the neighborhoods of Oakland. That plan is a 10-year shared vision for all of the Oakland neighborhoods, was officially adopted by the Planning Commission in 2022. We did bring the first round of potential rezonings in, you know, coordination with the land use strategy of the plan, which is in the Development Chapter, to, you know, outline, you know, three new zoning districts, you know, in, you know, kind of central, south, and west Oakland. You know, that did bring in the new urban center and residential mixed-use zoning districts, some of which will be applied here, and, you know, really, you know, are working not only from the land use perspective and, you know, rezonings, but also working with the neighborhoods to implement the plan in other forms as well. So with, you know, the details of the land use strategy for North Oakland and community process, I'll turn it over to Christian.
Thank you, Andrew, and hi. My name is Christian Umback, a Senior Planner with the Department of City Planning. And yeah, and as Andrew said, this zoning is recommended by the Oakland Plan. A major theme of the Oakland Plan was to grow housing and job opportunities to meet demands in Oakland, and there was extensive community engagement process as part of that plan over two years to get a lot of community input. That led to the land use strategy, which essentially makes recommendations and guidelines for the new zoning that we're proposing. In general, the land use strategy here, it represents the desired future development patterns based on the neighborhood's vision, and it is a general framework for how we propose zoning in the area. And it is mapped throughout the entire extent of Oakland. We will be focusing on a few areas in the northern part of North Oakland. One of those is the mixed-use areas, and you can see that in kind of the brown color there on the map. The intention is really to reflect and enhance the existing character of the area. This includes a mix of uses that we see, such as residential office institutions and retail. We also see a mix of scales from smaller-scale, single-family homes, medium-density, as well as higher-rise apartments, and also a mixture of architectural styles. Many of the guidelines that you see here have already been incorporated into the zoning districts that were adopted at the first round, and so we would be applying those to additional geographies. One important thing to note here is the building heights. It recommends the maximum heights that new zoning could take on, both with bonus performance points and without. So we use those as guidelines to, when we get to the height map later. All right, and then the second land use area is the Employment or Innovation District. This is, was established in the Fifth Forbes Corridor, and Alliance was zoning there, but it also has a portion through the furthest northern extent of North Oakland. And so the intention here is really to preserve space for employment uses. These would be sectors key to the Oakland economy, such as life sciences and healthcare. This area was identified because there is potential redevelopment with underutilized lots, as well as larger lots that could accommodate the size of these, that these employment uses require. And it's also close to high-frequency chances, such as the East Busway as well. All right, so that kind of covers the Oakland Plan, and now we'll talk about the community engagement process. So while the plan had its own engagement process, and it really set us up to understand the community's vision for this area, we really needed to be careful and targeted in terms of explaining the implications of the zoning. So we actually began back in the spring of last year, meeting with Oakland stakeholders that were a part of the Oakland Plan. Then, as the summer moved on and we developed that proposal, we had several public outreach events with a number of community organizations in August. And by September, we had a Development Activities Meeting, which is a requirement. And even after that, we had additional meetings with residents based on their request. And throughout that process, we had online engagement with all of the materials and maps being presented on our Engage PGH page as part of the Oakland Plan, and we also received comments and responded to comments on that online platform. We quickly just wanted to summarize, you know, some of the, what we heard from the community. First, you know, many were what we would think of as clarifying questions, trying to understand the implications of some of the complex, the complexities of the elements of the zoning, as you see listed here. We did hear a number of concerns, and this is topical-based. We heard concerns about density, the maximum building heights, as well as the height bonuses, setbacks in open space, as well as architectural and residential character. We can't get into all the details, but later on this presentation, we will kind of work through some of those topics to kind of reinforce how the zoning seeks to address some of those issues. And when it comes to max height, I will note that we heard the heights are a bit too high, and we've also heard that they might not be high enough. So there was thoughts on both sides. And then the final piece is there was a discussion on the employment area. The community was letting us know that is the land use strategy, does it remain applicable? And this was based on, you know, the community cited trends, moving to work from home, and the demand for employment, as well as we wouldn't want to block residential from certain areas in the employment district, as well as a few other factors. So we took that into consideration, and later you'll see how we actually modified the employment district based on that conversation. All right, so now I'll pass it over to my colleague, who will take over and talk about the zoning.
Thank you, Christian. I'm Anther Attendant, a Principal Planner at the Department of City Planning, and I will briefly talk about what the existing zoning is in Oakland and what is being proposed. So the zoning code, as we know, is a legally binding document and implements the goals identified in different city plans. However, since its adoption several years ago, many of the current zoning designations in Oakland have become outdated, and they no longer reflect the existing character, as well as the future vision of the Oakland Plan, which prioritizes mixed-use development, urban design goals, sustainability, and enhanced mobility. So the map that you see on the screen illustrates the existing zoning districts, which are primarily designated as multi-unit residential, as you see in orange, urban industrial in the north, which is the purple-blue, and also the Oakland Public Realm. These districts, as I mentioned, are no longer compatible with the Oakland Plan and do not allow mixed-use development. So the proposed zoning map amendments aim to apply existing zoning districts established through the Oakland Plan, which were also adopted for parts of central, south, and west Oakland in February of 2023. The two primary districts being applied are the Urban Center Mixed Use, or UCMU, and the Urban Center Employment, or UCE. Please note that these are only zoning map amendments that are being proposed in portions of North Oakland. There are no text changes being proposed to the two districts, and they are being applied as is to this area. So here we see the extents of the geography of the area that is being rezoned in North Oakland. And to briefly orient you, this includes in the north-south direction areas along North Craig Street, Neville Street, and Bigelow Boulevard, and in the east-west direction areas around Center Ave., Baum Boulevard, and Fifth Avenue. So some of the highlights of these two proposed zoning districts, which is the Urban Center Mixed Use and Urban Center Employment, as they're already identified in the zoning code, are that they focus on mixed use. The goal of the Urban Center Mixed Use is to provide a diversity of affordable housing options, neighborhood amenities, local businesses, and also accommodate employment uses. For the Urban Center Employment, it has a priority focus on employment uses, and it aims at providing space for new research and development buildings in sectors such as life sciences and healthcare. And here, the goal is to preserve employment uses, but it does not preclude housing as a use. Some of the highlights of the proposed zoning is that these two zones also include inclusionary and affordable housing. Inclusionary zoning already exists in Oakland since 2022. The development projects, which provide more than 20 residential units for sale or rent, must price 10% of those units affordably. Another feature of the two proposed zoning districts is a focus on design, more on the building form and typology, rather than strictly traditional use-based zoning. This approach aims to foster higher-quality architectural design and adds the public realm experience, ensuring more vibrant spaces. And finally, the building heights are based on the height map, which was proposed in the land use plan, and this we will go over a little bit later in the presentation. So I will talk very briefly about some of the site and building standards that are part of the UCMU and UCE districts, which are currently in the zoning code. And these are mostly in place to ensure that new development is compatible with the existing character and future vision of the plan. These include ground-floor transparency, which reduces long, blank facades and creates a more pleasant pedestrian environment. This also includes a focus on architectural design standards to regulate the bulk and the mass of the building, and includes features for facade design, building entry, and site design. And then these standards include specific requirements for how far a building must be placed from the property line, typically along a public street. And for example, in a built-to-zone, it may require a certain percentage of a building to be constructed within a certain distance from the property line, and this ensures a uniform street edge and encourages active street frontages. The building standards also include stepbacks, which refers to setting back of the upper floors of a building from the lower floors as the building's height increases. This helps to allow more light to reach the street and surrounding areas, while also reducing the building's bulk and mass as experienced by a pedestrian at the street level. Again, these are all integrated to ensure compatibility with some of the lower-density surrounding residential areas. Another feature is to ensure that large-scale developments blend well with smaller-scale buildings nearby is the green buffer requirement. The size of the green buffer depends on the height of the new development and the adjacent structure, but there is a minimum requirement of it being 15 feet. These green buffers also serve a dual purpose. They provide ecological benefits and also enhance the pedestrian realm and create more inviting public spaces. These are all already outlined in the zoning code. In response to some of the concerns that we heard from residents about open space and public realm, these new zones also include open space and public realm standards and regulations. For urban open space, large developments, which are more than 20,000 square feet in footprint, 10% of the lot area must be dedicated to open space. This space must be publicly accessible and can include landscaping or vegetation to help manage stormwater. For sidewalks, they must be at least 10 feet wide along all streets, with a clear path of at least five feet for pedestrians. And then for street trees, one street tree must be planted every 30 feet along street frontages to enhance the streetscape. So we know that each site is unique and will probably look very different, but here's an example of the type of landscaping one can envision. A well-designed public space will feature amenities like seating areas, decorative plantings, adequate setbacks with greenery and landscaping, and lighting. Another key feature of these zoning districts is the performance point system, which offers incentive to encourage higher-quality, more sustainable buildings. This system ensures provisions for community benefits and ensures that the new developments contribute positively to the area. To generally club them in different categories, one of the focuses on sustainability, which includes zero-energy, zero-carbon buildings, onsite energy generation, rainwater, and building reuse. It also includes a bonus point for affordable housing. There are also other community benefits like onsite public art, equitable development, and fresh food access. Developers typically need to seek variances to get extra height. However, with this system, there is an opportunity for residents to get community benefits in exchange for those additional heights, and get something for not just the incoming residents, but also for the existing residents of the area. And finally, here is the proposed zoning map. As you can see, a majority of the area is being rezoned to UCMU, Urban Center Mixed Use, which is in the dark blue, and then a small portion in the north, in the darker green, is Urban Center Employment, or UCE. And with that, I will hand it over back to Christian to explain this geography a little bit better.
Great. Thank you. So we just want to kind of focus in for a second on the Urban Center Employment District. And so the land use strategy originally envisioned it being a bit larger and kind of taking up most of the area to the east of Craig and north of Baum. But as you can see, it's reduced in scale. This was based on our discussion with the community and some of their concerns about this district. So what we do here is, you know, we agreed that it really comes down to parcel size and building footprint. And so the parcels to the left and to the west are smaller and narrower and less depth than the ones to the right side, the east of Melwood. That's the main street coming up here. And so residential is more nimble and can fit into some of those smaller lots. We didn't want to exclude residential there, based on what we heard, but we really limit this to the larger parcels that can accommodate large building footprints, and that is what the Oakland Plan identifies, is the need for employment uses to be developed. And so, and because we did this in keeping with the Neighborhood Plan Guide, we are updating the land use strategy so the plan aligns with the zoning. And so this is something that, this kind of shows that adjustment. All right, so because this is a map amendment, we've showed the new zoning map, the proposed zoning map, and now we're going to show the proposed height map. These new zoning districts, there's an innovation where we can have different heights at a block-by-block level, rather than traditional, which it's one height for the whole thing. This allows us to respond to the unique context that we see in the neighborhood. We also heard in our early discussions with community stakeholders that they do see kind of a varying of scales throughout kind of this area. And so we try to reflect that with the highest heights along the main corridor of North Craig Street, as well as along Center and Baum. So kind of these are major transit and pedestrian networks, and so they can accommodate the highest scales of density. The density, the heights kind of taper off as we move to both the east, getting to Shady Side, where we see lower-scale residential, as well as to the west, where we get into Shenley Farms, also lower scale. So the heights essentially taper down. And there are two numbers for each of the heights. Without parentheses, that is the base height with no performance points. If a developer elects to fulfill and earn those bonus points, they can go up to the highest, what we call the ultimate max height, and that is in parentheses. That is an ultimate height. Nothing more is permitted after that. It would have to go to a variance if there was anything more than that. And as we said, these heights directly were recommended based on the land use strategy. So if we think about, the land use strategy recommended nine stories with bonuses. We use nine stories. We think about accommodating an employment use, which has some of the highest floor-to-floor heights, and that's how we get to the 140 feet as the ultimate max height. And one last thing I will note is the employment district has its own height that goes a little bit higher, and that's also reflected in the land use strategy recommendations. All right, so what we're going to show here, these are building envelopes, the greatest extent that a building could fit into, essentially, but definitely not what a design would look like. And these are not on sites where we have any known plans for development. This is very much to help us visualize the scale. And so what we have here is this is what the ultimate max height in the UCMU District, 140 feet, would look like modeled here. You can also see we've modeled the stepbacks as the building increases in height, as well as we've cut out kind of a chunk for where the urban open space could be, so. And as you can see, it certainly fits within the context of neighboring buildings, not exceeding the highest. And for context, this is North Craig Street, and Baum Boulevard is kind of coming in to the right there. We'll show just quickly a few more examples. This one we modeled on Center Avenue near the intersection of North Craig Street, the stepbacks, the open space, and once again, in relation to its context. Another example, a little further down, near North Craig Street in Baird. This is also in the UCMU District, and these are all at 140 as the ultimate max. This is the ultimate max in the UCE District. This would be up to 185, so slightly taller to accommodate the larger scale of employment uses. And then these final ones just show kind of what the broader context would look like. A few things we'll note here is that, you know, we're not exceeding greater than what we see existing. In some cases, it is a bit higher than what exists. And then just one last perspective. All right, well, thank you so much. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. That will take us, move us to those who have registered to speak, beginning with Kathleen Gallagher.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Gallagher. I live at 234 North Dethree Street, in a home that my grandparents purchased in 1914. So I have seen dramatic changes in North Oakland. However, North Oakland has always been multi-use, and it has always been predominantly residential. And it is still predominantly residential today. Although I used to have five neighbors next to me, and now I have 90, which is great. So I guess I'm here to emphasize two points for this plan. One is, let's put the R back in North Oakland. One is, let's put the R back in North Oakland. We are still predominantly residential, and we'd like to have, we would encourage that you maintain and strengthen the residential nature of our neighborhood. One of the items that we feel would really strengthen our neighborhood is to require, again, setbacks. We do have a number of large buildings which were built, apartment buildings, built to the sidewalks. Those buildings were built at a time when they were surrounded by single-family homes that had backyards and front yards and gardens and trees. We no longer have that in our neighborhood. So we rely on setbacks to give us a little bit of breathing room. And you will notice that the more recent buildings in the neighborhood do have setbacks. They all have setbacks. Height, well, you know, we could talk forever about height. Where I live, the maximum height is 60 feet. I could live with 60 feet. That's reasonable. But, oh wait, the ultra-maximum height is 140 feet. I don't want to live with 140 feet in my backyard. And the restrictions for the alleys and ways are not the same as streets. So a developer could build right up to the property line in the alleys that face many of our back buildings. So those are the two points that I wanted to make. I would encourage an emphasis on the residential nature of North Oakland. In conclusion, I would like to make an official shout-out to Christian Umback from City Planning, who has worked diligently with us in the neighborhood on this project. We found him to be knowledgeable, responsive, and oh, so patient. I've spent many, many years working on civic projects, and I can honestly say that in working with Christian on both the Oakland Plan and this project, I think I might be able to pass zoning 101 now. So thank you, Christian, and thank you, council members.
Thank you very much. That takes us to George Danko.
I'm George Danko, and I'm speaking as a resident of North Oakland and also as a walker in my neighborhood, who would like to express my concerns and needs in light of the proposed zoning changes. I'm very concerned about the proposed maximum heights of buildings with the attached height bonuses. I strongly feel that the height bonuses in exchange for benefits are not acceptable. The benefits should be required as part of the building's original design and height, and not as a bonus add-on or as a bonus add-on. As a walker, I do not want to be traversing streets that are like dark canyons enclosed by tall buildings which shut out the sunlight. In passing, I'll mention the building, the large medical building on the corner of Thackeray and O'Hara, which is part of the University Medical Center there. It literally dwarfs the individual, and it shuts out the evening sunlight and actually a good view of the sunset. So I say that a moderation of heights needs careful scrutiny so that they are on a more human scale. However, I do want places to rest on my walks. For example, buildings designed with accessible spaces such as an alcove or an inset, open to the public, that would allow natural sunlit seating. Along these same lines, I want small parklets interspersed in my neighborhood that would also allow places of quiet and rest in a busy and sometimes congested place. This summer, I traveled to Slovakia with my middle son, and in all the major cities, we saw these small parks. And oftentimes, they had fountains and sprays which allowed us to rest and cool off. I mentioned specifically one park in Bratislava, the capital of the city. It was on a corner lot enclosed by a wall and shrubbery. You entered through a small entranceway and a gate. It had sculptures and places to sit and rest. When we were there, there was a young woman who was reading a book, and another man was just lying on a bench relaxing. And this parklet butted against an older church. And I'm emphasizing this, the wall, the rear wall of an older church, I'm emphasizing this because these small parklets can be interspersed in an urban environment between buildings very easily. I just have a number of just-
Unfortunately, your time has expired. If you have written notes, you can turn those into us and we can disperse them.
Well, they're handwritten, handwritten.
Okay.
Well, in conclusion, I ask you to take into consideration-
Sir, your time has expired, Mr. Danko.
Yeah, and, you know, as a walker, and other walkers in the city-
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa McSwigan.
Hello, this is Melissa McSwigan. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. 4131 Bigelow Boulevard in Oakland. I did participate in the Oakland Plan going back a few years and attended many meetings. There was much talk about affordability and making Oakland a welcoming and thriving place to live and work. When the plan was finally wrapped up, the proposed zoning changes did surprise me, as I don't remember ever discussing zoning specifics in our various regular meetings, such as what we're considering now. But I know a lot of time has passed, and there's been much else happened since that time of the initial Oakland Plan meetings. But given the, talking about making Oakland a thriving place, I can't completely reconcile this with the proposed new zoning. As said previously, you know, Oakland, North Oakland is very residential. It's already very dense with a mix of high-rise apartments and detached single-family homes, among other options. And it accommodates a nice variety of ages and income levels with short-term and long-term residents. This is a great mix and makes for a walkable, vibrant, appealing place to live. I do have concerns that some of these proposed setbacks, heights, and new uses could mess up the sauce that makes Oakland what it is. A person who understands zoning better than me explained that the ECMU zoning being proposed, there are 29 possible uses that could be permitted as of right, including, interestingly, an amusement arcade. So it sounds like we could bring Luna Park back on the corner of Craig Street. But I say that sort of in jest, but I'm a little concerned about the impact and, you know, not completely understanding or being able to digest these sort of unintended consequences on the quality of living, including with possible major demolition and the environmental consequences of that. So, and I know that there's some really good principles involved as described, but I do want to echo some of the two previous speakers, Kathy and George, I think it was. And I do have concern that maybe the unintended consequences are that we're going to benefit outside speculators and investors more than residents. So I really hope that you'll consider the residential nature of North Oakland. Changes are going to happen. They have happened, you know, that's inevitable. But, you know, but there's a really good mix of things that we have now, and I hope that, you know, that all the various plans and hopes and aspirations, you know, don't-
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Mary McDonough.
President Lovell and members of City Council, my name is Mary McDonough. I live on North Neville Street in Shady Side. Oakland is not an island, and the impact of its zoning doesn't stop at its borders. There's no wall, no sound curtain, no buffer to isolate the uses from one zoning district to an abutting one. Before you today is a proposed mixed-use district for Oakland, and the eastern boundary of that proposed district is Neville Street. And Neville Street is the boundary between Oakland and Shady Side. The many new uses proposed for the Oakland side of the street will have significant impact on the residential area across the street, across the Neville Street boundary. There, across the street, owners and residents have come to their properties with constructive notice that on the Oakland side of the street, there are only four uses permitted by right. But the bill before you allows for, as Melissa McSwigan has just mentioned, for 29 uses that would be permitted by right without review. And again, uses permitted by right in the Oakland district will increase from four to 29. Those 29 uses include, yes, an amusement arcade, animal care, bank groceries, medical marijuana dispensary, and two dozen more without review. And there are 17 more uses that could be permitted subject to some level of review. And all these uses could be permitted in existing buildings as well as new construction. Please recognize the importance of maintaining the viability of the residential areas that abut the proposed district. Please require a buffer area to mitigate the proposed uses. I suggest, for all MU-zoned properties located along Neville Street between Center and Fifth, limit the height to 95 feet. Do not reduce setbacks. Do not grant height bonuses. Limit uses to those that are currently allowed prior to the creation of the new district. Apply use limits to existing structures as well as to new construction, and do not reduce the level of review required in this buffer area. Now, here's an analogy. You cannot spray paint your house without giving consideration to your neighbor's rights. Will the paint be carried across property lines, find its way to their houses, their cars, maybe through open windows? Even if you don't intend to harm your neighbors, you must consider the impact of your spray painting. Please, consider the impact of Bill 2013 on abutting zoning districts.
Thank you very much. And Andrea Bookowitz. No worries.
Hello, my name is Andrea Boykwitch. I live in central Oakland, and I'm the Executive Director at Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, one of the two registered community organizations serving the North Oakland neighborhood. I have submitted written testimony concerning the public engagement that we helped facilitate for the North Oakland rezoning proposals, but I wanted to provide oral testimony to offer my perspective on the proposal. Briefly, I support the proposed rezoning with the caveat that I believe that the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind Children campus on both sides of North Bellfield should be added to the educational medical institutional zone to which it is contiguous. This is not something that was discussed during the Oakland Plan process, nor during the public engagement for this North Oakland bill, but as we all digest the implications of the proposed edits to the zoning map, it seems clear that the School for the Blind operates as an institution and ought to have an institutional master plan, and that the long-established uses of their campus are more appropriate to the EMI zoning than to the proposed urban center mixed use. I was OPDC's representative to the Steering Committee for the Oakland Plan and can attest that discussion of the land use plan occurred very early in the planning process, substantially before any of us had grasped the lasting impact that COVID would have on the demand for commercial development in the tight Oakland real estate market. At the time, preserving the urban industrial uses north of Baum seemed appropriate, both to the architectural character of that area and to the future economic development of North Oakland. The patchwork of residential and public realm districts south of Baum was definitionally mixed use. Since the adoption of the Oakland Plan in 2022, many of us have come to appreciate the importance of increasing the supply of residential units in Oakland close to the universities and hospitals, and we've had the chance to learn more about the way that urban center employment zoning functions in the Oakland ecosystem, both its opportunities and constraints. With that perspective, I advocated to diminish or altogether eliminate the proposed UCE zoning from the North Oakland map. UCMU allows for the same commercial uses as UCE without the restrictions that, given the area's location, contiguous with the Baum Center corridor seem a little unnecessary. I trust the city will reexamine this little enclave during the city comprehensive plan process. Meanwhile, I can admit it's consistent with recommendations of the Oakland Plan to rezon that little area as UCE. One neighborhood benefit of the proposed rezoning that I think the DCP has not emphasized enough is that under UCMU and UCE, it will no longer be okay for developers to purchase buildings that they knock down to turn into parking lots. That kind of park cars on it while we wait for a better idea approach to real estate development has turned whole swaths of North Oakland into a sea of asphalt, which has had all sorts of detrimental impacts to neighborhood character, economy, and quality of life. And lastly, I want to echo what Kathy said, expressing gratitude to Christian Umback and the team at City Planning for seeing the zoning plan through. It's been a lot, especially while we consider the zoning amendments being recommended for the Housing Needs Assessment implementation and Fair Housing Rule changes. North Oakland rezoning is comparatively simple. These changes are consistent with the Oakland Plan, recommendations provide appropriate contextual protection and added additional neighborhood benefits that support vibrancy and affordability. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? If not, if there's any comments and/or questions for members?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I want to speak, I want to thank our representatives from City Planning for, again, your hard work and diligence throughout this process. And I want to thank everyone who spoke today, and also note that council members and I personally have received many letters from residents, so thank you for participating in this process and for sharing your thoughts. I do want to dig into that to give you an opportunity to respond, which you preemptively did a little bit in your presentation, but just to kind of put some finer points on it. Can you speak to setbacks, the concern about setbacks that has been expressed, and why there might be concerns about that, both on major roads and also alleys and ways, but also why you think there would be concern and what the answer to that is? Realizing that it was already in a presentation, just to reiterate or put a finer point on that particular question.
For sure. I can just start by speaking generally. You know, so we do see that part of the existing character in North Oakland has zero setbacks, where the building comes directly to the street. And there are examples of storefronts that are transparent, that add to the vibrancy, and I think the character of North Oakland. And so by, if we had mandated setbacks, we would not allow new development to respond to that character and essentially fit in. Also, the new zoning districts focus on open space. And so we are requiring open space, and the zoning is very prescriptive about making sure it's high-quality, usable, inviting to pedestrians. And so in the case where open space is required and it's configured to be publicly accessible, there are examples where the open space will function, may function, as a setback. It will provide space between the sidewalk and the front of the building. But at the end of the day, there's flexibility, and we're trying to find a balance. So we are allowing the building to come up to the sidewalk in certain cases, but where open space is required, it provides some space. Setbacks without those detailed open space requirements may not give us the highest quality public realm we're looking for. And these new zoning districts ensure high-quality open space.
And so in what instances would there be the flexi, how would that flexibility play out? I understand that in some cases, the configuration might be, you know, a open space between the sidewalk and the street, in some cases, larger developments, it could be a parklet. But then how would the setback flexibility work in this, in these instances? What does the flexibility look like?
Do you want to kind of jump into that?
Yeah, I can respond to that. The way it's written in the zoning code currently, 60% of the building frontage needs to be within that defined five or 10-feet setback, and then the rest of the building can actually go in and out, depending on the design. So that's where we are regulating how much of the building is required to be within that. Again, it's a range. It's a range between the property line and the street, but there is opportunity for the rest of the 40% of the building facade to maybe respond to an open space or, you know, respond to an adjacent building or things like that. So that's where we can see a variation in the setbacks and make sure it's more responsive to the site itself and what is surrounding. and make sure it's more responsive to the site itself and what is surrounding.
Thank you. And so, you answered my question on green space and parklets. And we're hearing a lot about where we go... Well, let's see. So, the bonus heights. The maximum height versus the bonus height. Can you speak to the purpose of the bonus height and why we might want to see that versus a requirement that they meet all of the bonus requirement or, you know, bonus elective additions to their development? Let me just rephrase. Can you speak to why there might be the need for or the desire for bonuses and height bonuses versus just requiring that development to have all those items that, you know, might warrant a bonus?
Sure. So, you know, a couple of things there. Number one, we wanted to, there are some of those community benefits that are in the Performance Points section are not things that we can mandate development to, you know, to occur, but we can use as incentives. And so, you know, we built the Performance Points system to, you know, to have those incentives as things that, you know, aren't necessarily things that we can legally require, but things that, you know, for, in exchange for that additional boat, that additional height, and developer or applicant, you know, may, you know, can then provide that benefit. So, there are some of those things, like, you know, whether it's items around, you know, hiring or development or items around energy, you know, or things above and beyond our stormwater requirement, you know, that are bonuses in the Performance Points, you know, that are more than we would be able to necessitate for development in a zoning district. And so, you know, we want to be able to offer, you know, for those places where developments go above and beyond to, you know, to be able to get something in response for that as opposed to, you know, either not allowing, you know, or not, you know, not having a way for, you know, there to be, you know, an opportunity for, you know, kind of requirement to go above and beyond, or on the other side, you know, allowing kind of height without, you know, without being able to provide for some additional benefit.
And what you showed in those sort of building envelopes were the max height, like with bonuses. This is going to be maybe a tough question to answer because there's no apples to apples. But say in like other places, like RIV, the Riverside zoning districts, the RIV zoning overlay, where we use the Performance Point system. Does every building, does every developer choose to use the Performance Points and get that maximum height? Is it a mix of, you know, the sort of the max height and not the bonus height? Yeah, what does it kind of look like when we see it play out in other places?
Yeah, so, you know, I would say that anecdotally, I mean, obviously, we'd have to give you more detailed, you know, data, you know, and do analysis there. But anecdotally, most developments in the RIV, especially in the Strip District, do go above the maximum, you know, that kind of lower-level maximum height without bonuses and do go into the Performance Points. At the same time, I would say, you know, more often than not, we see that developments are not maximizing those heights, but going kind of in that range. And so, you know, in, you know, in the RIV, the maximum heights vary, you know, it's, you know, anywhere from, I believe it's eighty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty feet, you know, in that area. So, you know, there is kind of a variety of maximum heights in the RIV. But at the same time, like I said, we do see that it does vary, but it does create an opportunity for them to go above that forty feet, but, you know, but providing, you know, those additional benefits. And don't see that it gets to a uniform, everybody is hitting that maximum height. And so, there's not going to be kind of uniformity at that upper level. We don't anticipate that there will be that uniformity at the upper level in this location, you know, same as we've seen with the RIV.
Okay. Thank you. We've heard in community meetings and, you know, here today, One-on-Center held out as an example of what residents don't wish to see in the future. Christian, I know you've answered this question in the past in community meetings. Can you address that today as well? Would we see more One-on-Centers-style buildings? Or do you anticipate that this would force buildings to look a little different?
Yes, I do believe that new buildings will look different. One-on-Center doesn't have some of the form and design standards that we see. One of those would be building stepbacks. One-on-Center really doesn't step back. It kind of just goes straight up. But in the proposal, there will be required stepbacks as the building gets higher. Also, One-on-Center does not have open space or a cutout of the building. It pretty much goes to the street in all directions. A building of its scale would have to have a portion of open space that would be publicly accessible. And then, so we have that, lost my train of thought. But, oh, and then, of course, the height. One-on-Center is roughly a hundred-and-seventy feet. And so, that is well beyond, over thirty feet beyond what we see as the ultimate max. And in our building envelopes, you were able to see how what we're proposing does not reach to that extent of One-on-Center. I think those are the, those are the main ones, really, building form and height. And then, the final one, which I just thought of, is building length. I believe we can look at the standard. I believe it's three-hundred feet, where we limit, if a building's going to be three-hundred feet, it would have to break up and have a second building if we're going to build in that way. And One-on-Center is a little bit over that three-hundred feet. So, even the length and essentially the bulk of that development would be exceeding the limitations of what the zoning we're proposing would allow.
Thank you. We've heard also a lot about, you know, keeping North Oakland a primarily residential area. Trying to pose this as a question, is there any response, is there any response to that general sentiment here as it relates to the proposed rezoning? I know that there are different, obviously, different zoned areas or different kind of intended uses, right? The sort of entrance to the Baum Center corridor would look a little bit different from other parts of Craig or Neville, but, you know, we heard some concerns about the potential of all these different types of uses versus primarily residential. Any, anything that you'd like to say there? And if you don't have, really have anything to say, that's also okay. But wanted to acknowledge that that was a concern that we've heard.
I mean, I'll let Andrew speak as well, but I would say, first of all, we do see a high demand for residential development, specifically multifamily residential. So, that is the type of development we would anticipate, especially taking advantage of the height and density that would be permitted here. So, I think that's, I think that's one that I would point out. Also, we're allowing for mixed use, so we would anticipate, you know, the ground at second floor could be a commercial use. The upper stories could be residential or office. So, you know, there could be a variety of uses within a building as it goes vertically. But it, you know, we see it responding to the needs of the community. So, we think about retail that serves the community. Those are the types of uses we would anticipate coming in. And we, you know, we've looked through the use table when this district was created, and we're comfortable with that, you know, the uses that are there are applicable to the context of the Oakland neighborhood.
And maybe just to follow that, I mean, many of, you know, I think, you know, the commenters were correct in that, you know, there are portions of North Oakland that are primarily residential. And I think we see that that would be able to continue under this proposed rezoning. There are, however, you know, a number of small offices, small retail that are in many of these apartment buildings or, you know, multifamily buildings that do exist in there. And the present zoning, the RM zoning, does not, you know, does not allow for those to exist by right. And what's being proposed here as a change in the zoning would allow for what we see in some of those buildings that already exist in the neighborhood to be buildings that could be permitted by right.
Thank you. Lastly, we heard some concerns about sidewalk width and the ability to traverse a sidewalk with multiple people walking on the sidewalk. Or is there, I was trying to pinpoint what exactly brought that concern up with the public, and I couldn't. Maybe you know why that would have been expressed as a concern. But generally, can you, can you speak to sidewalks, not just the setbacks, but sidewalks themselves?
Right. So, in the presentation, we mentioned that the sidewalks would have to be at least, a minimum is defined, which is ten feet, and out of that, five feet would have to be clear path for pedestrians and also for accessibility. So, that is already defined in the zoning code, and it's also what is used in other districts. So, that's consistent throughout. And I'm not sure what the other concerns were that brought it up, but this is already included and will be applied to any new development to make sure they have at least ten-feet-wide sidewalks.
And in the case where the existing space for sidewalks is less than ten feet, they would have to go into their parcel to accommodate the width. So, if there's any site specifics, those would be accommodated going into the property.
Versus it being public right-of-way, it would be part, it would be same cartway or whatever, sidewalk width, but kind of just on their property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
In addition to that, you know, so obviously, there will be some places where new development providing potentially wider sidewalks than exist today in the neighborhood. You know, with, as Christian had mentioned before, the stepbacks, you know, and the building stepbacks at upper floors, the intention is to provide a better pedestrian experience as well. That, you know, again, as One-on-Center was mentioned, you know, a building that goes straight up, you know, at the street level doesn't allow for light to get down to the street in the same way that something that allows for upper story stepbacks, that, you know, allow for, you know, that as an opportunity, you know, so that even if there are buildings with zero setbacks, those upper story stepbacks do allow light to, you know, to the sidewalk to provide for a better pedestrian experience.
I'm sorry, I said last question, but what does public process look like? You know, how will the public who, you know, would like to weigh in on newer projects that are proposed in some of these parcels, what will that look like? I know it's somewhat dependent on the actual project that's being proposed, but can you just speak to that a little bit, even generally?
Well, that's one thing. With this new zoning, any major project will have to go to Planning Commission. And Planning Commission has a public hearing, and it also requires a development activities meeting. So, the developer will have to propose this to the community. Community will be able to ask questions and provide comments. It will also go to Design Review, our contextual design advisory panel, to really scrutinize the design and make sure that it lives up to the standards that we have for the area. And also, as part of the Planning Commission review, they'll also look at, we'll get to see renderings of the buildings and also look at like a shadow study to understand the actual impacts of the bulk of that building and the pedestrian experience. And so, there's kind of a number of items along the way that allow for public processes for every major development that will come through in the area.
Okay. Thank you all. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Before going to councilman, which building on Center are you describing? I just wanted to look it up.
Pardon?
Which building on Center are you describing?
One-on-Center.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Got you.
Center and North Craig.
Got you. Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, I looked it up too. I wasn't familiar with it by that name, but as soon as I looked it up, I made sense that that was what we were talking about.
Got you.
So, thank you for being here. I don't have a whole lot to say here. You know, I know this is Councilperson Strasberg's district here, and this is something you've clearly done a lot of engagement with and worked around, bringing all the different stakeholders here. I want to acknowledge that it's brave to show the envelope maps in a presentation there. I understand what they mean, but I also know that they can be very scary to people when you see those. And, you know, you did a good job of putting the caveat that, like, this is just a, this is a design, but this is not what this will look like. But I also know that, you know, whenever those get presented to me, like, my initial thought is like, oh, my God. So, you know, definitely want to acknowledge the transparency that's involved with that. You know, I I am interested in this concept that we've come to a couple of different times here as we move to more towards a bonus point system. And I fear, the way the bonus point system works, the one way that you explained it is, I think, fantastic that we are giving, we are allowing developers to have more height or density to get them to do things that we wouldn't otherwise see or couldn't mandate them to do. But another way to describe that is that we are having an overly restrictive process that gives them the opportunity to build as long as they do the things that we want them to do. So, in the RIV, for example, which is, I think, I believe was the first of the bonus point areas. Am I right about that, or am I, I could be incorrect?
The Uptown Public Realm was actually first.
Okay.
But, I mean, they were pretty close together in timeframe.
Okay. So, what I want to know is, at what point do we reassess and say that although we provided this bonus point zone, everyone is maxing out the height? And therefore, this is not a process that's working. Everyone, everyone is going to do whatever they need to do to get to the top, and we're kind of creating this, like, artificial ceiling almost. So, where, at what point do we, like, come back to the drawing board and say, hey, maybe this isn't the process that works?
Sure. So, just some background as to what led into the Performance Points. You know, what we were seeing was that many times we were having a struggle with our height limitation or maximum heights being too low. And what was happening was that it was requiring developments to go before the zoning board of adjustment, many times of which involved them negotiating community benefit on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, we wanted to create a more predictable process so that there was an understanding of what needed to be done to get to a certain point. You know, I think, you know, to the councilperson's question earlier, I mean, we have not seen that, you know, everyone is maximizing, you know, is going all the way to the maximum height in the districts where we've applied the Performance Points. So, I think that if we did see that, that would be a place in which we would definitely want to be rethinking what those maximum heights with bonuses would be. In addition, when we went through the introduction of the urban center districts and the Oakland rezonings, we did stop and take a look at the Performance Point system and its efficacy because, you know, what we were seeing, and I think still exists, is that, you know, in some form, is that all of those points are not equal. And all of those points are not equal sometimes because sites are different, and it may be more important to provide, or maybe easier to provide additional stormwater on a site than it may be to provide affordable housing. But we really want to try to make sure that those points, even though sites are different and may facilitate some of those being easier points than others, depending on the site, we didn't want to make it so consistently one of those points was easier to get than others. And so, there was, we were trying not to get to a, there's an easy way to get, you know, an easiest way to get to bonuses, you know, that there is some sort of parity between the difference, the different bonuses that we're providing. And so, you know, we did, as a part of the engagement that we had with development community, as part of, you know, introducing those three new districts, did talk about the Performance Points and those different bonuses, and did create, and at the time, make some revisions to the Performance Point system to, again, try to get to a little bit more of that parity. If that answers your, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess, so broadly speaking, like, I support the idea of the bonus points. I think that's, it's a, it allows flexibility, right? And I think that's something we want to see is that we're allowing, you know, especially as we've identified that we might want green space, we might want setbacks, stormwater, you know, all the things that we'd want. We allow the flexibility of what is, what is the thing that your project can provide? And I like that idea. I just want to know, how often are we auditing and evaluating? Like, is this actually a system that is producing, is everyone going to take advantage of composting and no one is going to take advantage of affordable housing? Or whatever, you know, whatever it might be. I'm using those as examples. But do we actually, like, take stock in the data of, this is the way that people have done this? And then also, who, who is actually building and saying, I'm just going to stick with the base level? I, I don't think anyone in the RIV is just doing the base level, but I could be wrong about that.
No, there, I mean, there are, I mean, there are some, like I said, it's more often than not that people are going and using the performance point system in the RIV. Like I said, that, that kind of larger scale, actually looking and pulling all the permits, pulling where people were, you know, providing performance points and saying, okay, well, how do we meet with people and understand, you know, was, you know, because the urban center, the introduction of the three new districts, the urban center districts and the RMU, the residential mixed-use district, you know, that all use the performance point system was kind of the bigger expansion post-RIV and Uptown. And so that was, you know, when we went through that process in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that is when we did that assessment, you know, of the performance point system. And I think, you know, are continuing to obviously collect all of that data, you know, so I mean, you know, in the interim, but I think, you know, it is, it is our intent to continue to assess, you know, how this is working through time.
When is the next time you think that we reconfigure that?
I would say that if there are, you know, potentially larger scale zoning changes that, you know, are beyond what we have going on now, like in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, I think that would be likely a, you know, a time in which we would, you know, be looking to, looking at the performance point system and its continued efficacy, you know, both of the system as a whole, as well as the individual options or points, you know, within it. You know, so, you know, as thinking about, you know, kind of further large-scale expansion, I think we would continue to, you know, to assess it.
Okay. And is it, is it easy to track for us on who's taking advantage of what or do, do we actually need to go on a case-by-case basis and pull up project history? Or is it stored somewhere?
So yes, we are tracking, you know, who's using what performance points and for what purpose, because obviously these are going through the planning commission process, these are going through permitting process where these are all a part of what's recorded as part of their, you know, developments obligations as a part of, you know, them being able to satisfy their, you know, to get approval for permits.
I guess that's another way, like, do we have to go through all of the planning commission minutes or is there an Excel sheet?
No, we are already, we are already tracking them. So if that's something that you would like us to share, we can definitely share it, you know, but that, that is something that we do track, yes.
Okay. Good, that's, that's good to know. Again, I, I think that North Oakland has a very, you know, it's a very unique part of, of the city. It's a pretty awesome part of the city and I'm glad that you were able to tailor, you know, unique needs for that area for this plan and, you know, really use its, its unique history and everything that makes North Oakland special and make sure that that was the, the policy that was, was created for it. So thank you for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Just following up on the councilman's question, I'm curious, I don't know the answer to this. I know in Uptown, the points have been used on a lot, a lot of the development to reach higher heights, but I don't know if they've actually reached maximum heights. Do you know the answer to that?
I don't know that answer offhand, but I, you know, again, we can, we have the data.
I know they've gone, I know they've used it to go up, but I don't, I don't think they've all reached actual maximum heights, which I don't know if that's good or bad. It just, once you asked the question, it made me think about it.
I think we've seen it more in, I think, the UPRB, the, you know, which is kind of the more residential section of Uptown than we have in the UPRA, which is really the section of Fifth and Forbes closer to downtown. So we have, you know, that, that one has a higher max, the UPRA has a higher max height, I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet. And in the UPRB, I believe it's eighty-five. And so we've seen people kind of go up, you know, probably to the upper limits in that, in the UPRB, but I don't think we've seen anyone yet do that in A.
Councilman Strasburger had exhaustive questions that answered all of the concerns that, the various letters that we've all collectively received. So I thank her for asking and getting clarifying statements. And I do want to thank you, Mr. Ambach for, and Andrew and all staff for all the work that you've put into this. This has been years in the making and a lot of tedious time, time effort work. So we just want to thank you for all you've done to get us to this point. With that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
All those papers say aye.
Aye.
This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you.